It's Thursday, December 5th, 2019 at 5:30 PM. All council members are present, the city administrator is present, city attorney is present, the city treasurer is present, and Keely Hanson, our city admin assistant, is here tonight to take notes because Jill is out of town. Item two is the invocation of pledge of allegiance. Will you lead this?
Well, precious and loving him and father, thank you for bringing us all together this evening. We ask for your blessings upon this meeting and upon the Bandera City Council. Thank you for getting everyone here this evening safely, and we ask that everybody have a safe trip home, and remember the reason, the reason for the season is your son, Jesus, who died upon the cross for our many sins. We ask for your grace and we beg for your mercy, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is visitors to be heard, and please hold your comment for three minutes. Darcy?
I wanted to just, I just wanted to respectfully request that the city council take under advisement that maybe y'all had moved the city council meetings back a little further. From what I understand, the council meetings were moved to 5:30 for a reason that may not exist any longer, and I know that it may be possible now to move it back a little bit later. I know it would make it easier for somebody like me that doesn't work here in Bandera, I have to drive a little fast from Honda to get here at 5:30. So if y'all would take that under advisement, I know it would please somebody like me. So, thank you. That was it.
Thank you, Darcy. Okay, let's get on to item four, discussion of possible action on the following items. Approved request by Mr. Don Sloan with the Medina River Protection Fund to use Bandera City Park for the 20th Annual River Cleanup on May the 2nd, 2020. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. I have a letter here with actually formal requesting, which I think we have at our class. Oh, you think so? Yeah. We did.
Yes, we sure did.
This is actually for, this was actually the letter for the EDC.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I've made up another one to be formal, make sure we got them right.
Thank you.
One over here.
We can pass them around, it's like, you know, give them to the.
Separate that one, please, if you would.
Sure.
On the May the 2nd of this year, we're planning the 20th Anniversary Cleanup of the Medina River Cleanup, and we are getting started a little bit earlier this year because last year we had over 250 volunteers who came to the totally volunteer effort. There's no paid employees on this, and most of them came within a hundred mile radius of this town. We had some come from out of state, one from Cambridge, Maryland, and one from Seattle, but they all have ties here, so that's the reason that they came. We had a very good year as far as what we picked out of the river clean. Normally, we get a couple thousand pounds of just trash, but then this, last year, we got a lot more recyclable metal, and one of the things that contributed to that was that we had an automobile that had been washing through the river, our scouts discovered that, and it hadn't even been reported to the Bandera County Sheriff's Department, and so we traced it down, it was a San Antonio owner, but we were able to get that out of the river, not on the same day as the cleanup, but we went back and got it later, and that took our total up to, normally we had 3,500 to 4,500 pounds of recyclable metal, but that took it up to 7,000 pounds. So, so that was a really, a record-breaking year for us, but, so I can't claim the revenue of the car because we've been doing this 20 years, and that's the first time that we've taken a car out of the river until we found one.
Thank goodness.
So, let's see, overall, we're looking for a good year, the river's running decent, even though we haven't had much rain, and we're hoping that we'll be able to, again, have a good day of cleaning and take it out of the river. We particularly appreciate y'all helping us all these years by letting us use the park, and so we, each year y'all supply dumpster, and then we get a dumpster for the recycling, and we ask for the use of the park starting Friday night and then Saturday night, and the cleanup starts at nine o'clock in the morning, so that's signing time, and everything is very well controlled. We have 12 sections, 50 miles of the river, and so we check people in, and we get everything going with the food, we have Commissioner Bobby Harris, precinct two commissioner, who's the cook, he's also the president of the River Cleanup, and he and his team work all day long supplying breakfast and lunch and then barbecue for everybody that survives the day, so we're looking forward to a good, good episode again, so. We really appreciate y'all's help on this, and also I want to say that, again, the park is just beautiful, it's just the improvements y'all made are just fantastic, so, thank you very much.
Rebecca? May I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of Bandera City Park from Friday time, specific time on the Friday?
Well, people come in, not very many people will be there at all, but some do trickle in, and they start coming in usually about nine o'clock because they're from out of this immediate area.
Okay, well, let's just say five, 5:00 PM on Friday, May 1st through Saturday, through, sorry, Sunday morning, May 3rd.
Sunday morning.
9:00 AM.
Bryce Eckens, my question, these people who are coming into the park early, do they expect to camp in the park?
There'll be a few that do stay in the park overnight, and, but there's, they're usually just like six people or something, sometimes no, none of them do, but we just ask that in case they can, because most of the people will go to the Pioneer RV Park, and they also allow people to come there and even take showers and everything like that, but I don't think more than about six to eight have ever even spent the night, but we just ask for that because some people aren't equipped to, like just financially to rent a motel.
I'd like to ask a question, and I'm happy to amend the motion to allow that, if necessary, but Jay, we allow the camp, the overnight camping for this group in the past years. How'd everything go last year, is there anything we need to tweak?
No, everything was fine.
Their, the city staff is identifying these people, and they know they're there, and will, any?
We have never had a problem with any of the folks, so there's very, very few of them that can camp in the city park, and they, they were wonderful.
Do I need to amend the motion, or is that something in the purview of the administrator when he does the agreement?
Council has to approve overnight camping in the park, so if you would amend it.
For the one night, correct.
Yet, in fact, just Friday night, I believe, is when most, because most of them leave and go back home on Saturday night.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to allow the overnight camping on Friday night for people participating in the Medina River Cleanup.
Bryce Eckens, any further discussion?
So, the request that we just got actually has three components to it. There's a request for the use of the park, there's the reservation of the pavilion as well, which may fall under Jay's ability to do that, and then also the dumpster placed in there by us. Is that?
That's correct.
That's all part of your request, even if that's not what's on the agenda?
My understanding is that we approve the use of the park, allow the variance for the overnight camping, and that Jay will work out the rest of it in the agreement. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we also close that gate too, we don't leave the park open once the people, they do come, we, it's unlocked, but it's fixed to be closed so that it doesn't look like it's, it's not just open so anybody can drive in there.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I was just gonna say, we're no longer charged on Friday, so there's, the park will be open, they can come and go on Friday anyway.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor, not opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan.
Well, thank y'all very much, I appreciate you so much for supporting on this, and y'all have been in this for 20 years too, so I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, item B is to approve an ordinance adopted in the 2018-19 amended budget. You received a copy of the amended budget before we did it, because it's very, it's a beautiful budget, I love it. I just want to point out to you, council, that on page one of your budget, I want you to note that our revenues were above the budgeted amounts by $30,027.68, and our expenditures were below the budgeted amount by $96,431.91, leaving us an overall plus side of $126,459.59. Once this budget has been audited, and we have final numbers from Keith Dependorf, we'll bring back to council for projects to use those surplus funds on, and if you would look on page, you have the front and back version, okay, page 19, you will see that in the utility fund, revenues were up by $20,070.64. The expenditures, the budgeted expenditures were down by $156,523.57, which leaves us an overall plus number of $176,594.21. There's some great things we can do with this money, so just, so you know, we have a really, really good budget, and now if you would approve the amended budget, we can move on. Rebecca?
I'll make the motion to approve the amended budget for the 2018-19 of this whole year.
Bryce Eckens, further discussion? All in favor? All in favor, not opposed. Thank you. Okay, item C is to assign city liaisons to community organizations list. You have the list in front of you. I'll start, I want to stay with the CBB, and I'll start at the top, Rebecca. You have the, Arthur Nate Planet?
Anybody else want to step up for that one?
You want to stay with it?
I'll stay with it.
Okay, Rebecca, right now you, would you call out the ones that you were on, and do you want to stay on?
Sure, sure, sure. Um, so here, I'm with the River Authority Groundwater District, I'd like to stay, Electric Co-op, I'd like to stay, ISD, I'd like to stay. I'm happy to step down from the chamber, and, because that was, has Bryce and myself listed there, so I'm, I'll step down from that one, and I'm gonna keep the Hill Country Alliance and the Bandera County Sister Partnership Association. Vision for Bandera isn't particularly active, but I'd, yeah, you can take me off of that one. Is anybody making notes? Are you making notes?
Yes. What did we decide to do about the Bandera County Sister Partnership Association?
I'm still on that board.
You're still on that one, okay. Next in line, there's me on the BBA, I would like to keep that one. Okay, Tom McCacken, our previous council member, was on the Bandera Library, anybody want to pick that one up?
I'll pick that up.
Thank you, Jerry. Glenn, you are?
I'd like to stay with Commissioners, oh, I'm sorry, Lynn or Glenn, I'm sorry.
Sir?
I think she's going.
What'd you say, Glenn?
Glenn.
Yeah, I'd like to stay with the boys and girls, Dove and the Silver Sage.
Thank you. Okay, down, down. Bryce, Chamber? EDC?
Yes.
Now, Tom McCacken was also on, that, any other member of council want to be Representative Lynn? Ten, most of them anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Tom McCacken also had the historical permission?
I'm gonna take that.
Jerry, you want that one? Okay. Okay, then we get up here to Lynn, Commissioner Ford?
I'd like to keep that.
For your times?
I'd like to keep that as well.
Vision for Bandera, folks, that's pretty much, they're like in timeout right now. Do we want to assign someone to Vision for Bandera?
I don't think it hurts in case something comes up that they call on.
Okay, so, oh.
I'll, I'll volunteer.
You're on it.
We can't really stand, we can't really stand Lynn, Rebecca, and Bryce, so we kind of, somebody's got to give that one up.
I don't, yeah, I, I gave it up.
Okay, so Lynn and Bryce, y'all want to stay with Vision for Bandera?
Yes, ma'am.
And then Jay, you are on the Fire Department and the PNC. You're good with those?
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody see anything that I've omitted?
I'm kidding.
That's Jay. Is anybody out there making connections with any other organizations that you'd like to help bring information to council through?
Bryce?
I'm with the Bandera Wranglers.
EDI?
EDI? They've been a pretty active group lately, right? Are they not considered a new organization?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we make this list. Are you volunteering?
Yeah. I do a lot of work with them, but I don't know if I can attend all of them, maybe if they're only, might be not something.
Jerry, is there anything that you want to add your name to that?
This time, let me see how involved it's gonna be with the two, since I don't know what I'm getting into yet.
Or if you think of any, any other, whether it's a government entity, or an organization, a nonprofit, or anything that you would like to kind of champion?
Is that something you need a decision on now?
No. I'm just kind of trying to help you understand what we're doing here.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, any further comment about the organization? All right, let's move on. Item B, authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies and Randy Haller LLC for the purpose of the purchase, installation, implementation, and training of in-code financial software. Jay, I see you have some numbers for us.
I do, maybe. As you can see, the, what the agreement was, and Amber went through this, went through everything with them, and they're gonna keep the fees the same for this upcoming year. And as you can read down here, that after that, they'll go up 3%, or before they went up 5%. So she's actually done the negotiating with them, we're gonna add a, basically a module to plug into the time clock, where so whenever you plug in the time, it automatically generates everything instead of them having to do it manually for everything. And that's at a cost of $1,108, I believe, yes, and 75 cents. But we're actually gonna save, if I'm right here, about $3,000 over the total that we had before. This will be for a two-year contract now.
Okay, I did notice that you're trying to negotiate the contract for the end of the fiscal year rather than the calendar year, which would be a big help. Have we budgeted for this amount this year?
Yes, we have.
Or we need to move a little later?
No, it's included in there.
We've already budgeted for it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Council? Motion to approve the agreement with Tyler Technologies.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? All in favor, not opposed. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Was the $1,188.75, is that annually for a two-year contr?
What's that for two years?
Actually, it is, no, it's not annually, it is $698 per year is what that comes to.
For that specific feature?
Yes.
So, but it's 11, so the 1,100 and something is for both years?
Is that what you're saying? Contract total?
Financial personnel, customer relation, and document management suites, $1,108.75. Okay, the time clock interface is $698 this year. Next year it will go up.
Okay, so what I'm unclear about is the 1,100, is that 1,100 per year for a two-year contract, or is that 1,100 for both years?
Is that all of them together, or is that just one?
No, that was, she came back with lower numbers on the interface between the time clock and the Tyler Technologies, so she actually dropped that to the $698 for this year. Next year it's gonna go up a total of $854.92 for all of the modules, so that's only an increase of 3% versus the normal five that we've been going up. So that actually is saving us $3,200 this year, this next year, or the budget that we're in. So that $1,100 is, is not what.
It's no longer a relevant number.
Right, right.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. All right.
She lowered it since we thought this was.
Further discussion? All in favor? All in favor, not opposed. Thank you. Item E, we have the legislative update by city attorney, Dan has brought us a presentation.
And so, if everybody can get me fine, I'll stand here with my laptop so I can see what I'm talking about. And one of the things that, as y'all are talking about the different meetings that y'all are gonna go to as liaisons, I would just remind you that I think you're a member city of ACOG, and they do monthly, if not every other monthly, training, a lot of it is legal updates. This legislative, we're the attorneys for ACOG that does all the training, it's free to member cities, so not to, I did this at ACOG for, for free, that you could have attended, and, and any training that we do there, you always have access to that, so just keep that in mind when you're putting together your calendars and your schedules of training, it's, their offices are on 410 in San Antonio.
I think we have a couple of things on the books for webinar, webinars occurring here, and then all of us at least should look at those newsletters and attend as many of those types of continuing education opportunities as possible.
For our new council member, that's for us, there's, there's a, TML has their newly-elected official training coming up in San Antonio in January, hopefully you'll reach that, and ACOG will be doing one as well. So, lots of opportunities to make sure you have all the tools you need to do your, your jobs that pay y'all so well, to sit up there, right? So legislative update, so this is just a snapshot of the final numbers, so 7,541 total bills were introduced, 1,400 of those approximately were passed, 2,000 of the bills that were introduced were city-related, and 330 of those passed. So what that means in reality for you as council members is that that's 330 new laws that are on the books now that weren't on the books before that legislature got together that may or may not impact you. And so what we do, and every attorney that, whether it's municipalities, have to do is we have to go through those bills, coordinate with TML's legislative staff, Bill Longley that y'all probably talked to or have worked with, and Scott Houston, and figure out which ones, which ones of these bills are gonna impact our cities, and make sure you have the information you need, any changes, any updates to your ordinances and things such as that. So what I'm gonna try to cover today, I'm not covering all 330, I know some of y'all are gluttons for punishment and want to see the Cowboys, so I'm only gonna cover a few of these, I know, I know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get there. So first, the good news, and that's kind of some small print, but there was actually some good news, there were a lot of bills that were introduced that have been very detrimental to cities. Some of them are considered, are what we call super preemption bills, also a tree protection preemption bill, a short-term rental, an STR preemption bill. A lot of these bills that you see on this list, I'm not gonna read all of them to you, but these did not pass, and that's very good news for cities, but bad news is they're going to come back, there's no doubt about it, unless something drastic changes at the legislature, like a flip in who controls that house, these will come back. A lot of the bills that we consider bad and detrimental this year that did pass, we've seen them two or three times in prior legislative sessions, they just finally got enough traction to get them through. So, the one on here that I would say is the, is the worst of all of these bills, would be next to the last one listed there, where it talks about bill mandating eminent domain offers at 145% of market value. Just so what that means in layman's terms is if there's a public need, let's say the city of Bandera needs, needs a new water line, or sewer line, or a road, or something such as that, and you can't reach an agreement with a property owner to acquire the necessary easement or property to, to do the, the project for the public's good, the offer that would, that would have to go through, if you had to go through eminent domain or condemnation process, would have to be 145% of market value. I mean, it's like, sign me up, if somebody wants my property for 145% of market value, I will, they, New Braunfels can have my home right now, so, but that's a very detrimental bill for cities because most cities would balk at that, but anyway, it's, it's meant to discourage you from even exercising the authority that the Constitution grants. So, let's get started, so Texas Open Meetings Act. So, while the legislature was literally in session, Doyle v. State came down, and what Doyle v. State did was the Texas Court of Criminal Appeals ruled that the criminal conspiracy provisions of, of the Texas Open Meetings Act were uncon, was unconstitutional. And so that means basically there's no criminal penalty for violation of the Open Meetings Act, at least during that time when that decision came down. So they decided, hey, we have to close this loophole, or we're gonna have council members and everyone else running a mock and meeting in numbers less than a quorum to deliberate the, the city's business without fear of imprisonment, right? So they fixed it, that's what they tried to do. So they redefined deliberation, I don't, first of all, they didn't fix it, but they think they fixed it. So they redefined deliberation to include a verbal orbit and exchange between a quorum of a governmental body, or between a quorum of a governmental body and another person concerning an issue with the jurisdiction, within the jurisdiction of the governmental body. Why that's significant is before this change, this deliberation could only be verbal, right? It couldn't be written communication, could not constitute deliberation. So once you, once you do that, and once you bring in written, written communication constituting deliberation, that, that brings in text messages, emails, could, yes, I don't, we don't even, that's not even, that's not even say that out loud, but yes, could chat rooms and things such as that, just depends. But it, it kind of opens it up, so it's not just verbal, now it's all written communication as well, and they re-titled the criminal conspiracy provision from conspiracy to circumvent the chapter to prohibited series of communications. And number three is, is kind of the key on this, so you commit an offense if a member of the governmental body knowingly engages in at least one communication among a series of communications. Now, you still have to have intent, but here's what concerns me about this provision and the change they made, and, and I've kicked this around with dozens of municipal attorneys, is my concern is that there's a routine way, cities, not, I don't know if y'all do this or not, but other cities that I represent, and I know for a fact, communicate through, through BCC often. You'll have a city manager communicate with his entire council saying, you know, and sending out a BCT email, that is a communication, if it becomes among, a, a communication among a series of communications, I have concerns that, that someone could interpret that or look at that as being a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So it's very important that when you get communications, even if it's a BCC, if you know that that went to all council members, that should be where that communication stops. Don't, don't get into a, a back and forth with other council members or your city administrator if, if you know that they're just trying to get information to you, let's keep it as a way to distribute information as it's intended to be, because if you engage in at least one among a series, you won't even know, right? So if, if you reply, you don't know how many other people have replied or communicated with each other, so it's best just to not, to do, not do that, just accept it as information being distributed. So, if you knew at the time that you engaged in the communication, that the series of communications, number one, involved, or would involve a quorum, and two, would constitute a deliberation once a quorum of members engaged in a series of communications, that is a, that is an offense. And that went into effect as soon as they, as soon as they got ready, the governor signed it. It didn't wait until September, that was effective immediately, so that's been, it's been the law of the land now since April, April or May. So, that was one big change when it comes to the Open Meetings Act. The other big change was right, right to speak. So, Bandera, like most of the communities down here, are really good, you've always had citizen comments, at least since I've been working with you, I've noticed that. I came, when I came down to this part of Texas, I came from an area that, no, there was no, there was no public comment listed on the agenda, the meetings are held, I heard this, this young lady here say, hey, can we have them a little bit later? We didn't have night meetings in West Texas, they apparently didn't want citizens participate, they made it like 9:00 in the morning, and, and there was no public comment on the agenda. Now it's law, so they have to do that, right? So now they say. So now they say you have to have public comments at any meeting of the governing body, and they have to be before any action items. So, it's gotta be the top agenda. There are, there were some communities that were always putting public comments at the end. As a battle of wills, I guess. If you really wanna speak, wait till the very end and tell us what you think about what we've already acted on. So, but anyway. The way this works though too is, a couple of things. So you have to have the public comments. It's not meant to replace or be a substitute for public hearings. I don't wanna confuse public comment with a public hearing. There are some things that this governing body does that requires a public hearing that separate apart from your citizen comment portion. But what you can do is when people sign up, you can have two sign-up sheets so you can delineate who's there just to make public comment, and who's there for a specific public hearing. Or you don't have to. You can let them speak at both and say the same thing if you so choose. Also, if anybody ever comes to your public meeting or public hearing that requires an interpreter, they get twice the amount of time. It's in the statute itself. So if you need, if you, if you're Spanish-speaking only, you need interpreter, or any other language, you have an interpreter, it doubles the time allotted. So whatever your standard time allot, amount is, you would multiply that by two. You can adopt reasonable rules. I don't, we do have some rules, I think y'all did adopt those as part, when you did your adoption of your council. That included rules for the public as well for your public meetings. Also, it used to be, some cities would, had provisions within their notice on, on public comment that you couldn't be critical, you couldn't say, you couldn't be critical of the governing body, or you had to address the body as a whole, and you couldn't address individuals, couldn't talk about employees. The legislature said, nah, we're not gonna have that. I mean, people can, people can make criticism of the governing body and, and how business is being done, within reason. You know, you can have, still have reasonable limits. We don't want people, you know, getting foul, getting loud, getting boisterous, being disruptive. But they can lodge complaints and petition their government and be critical on policy, of policy and the way things are done. Alright, Public Information Act. So, one of the things, let me, so one of the things that has often been problematic with the Public Information Act and those kind of requests is, and this is particularly troublesome, can be for a smaller community, is that any, any document that is being created, held, or anything done on your behalf, by you or on your behalf, is a public record. So it's not just things that are happening here in City Hall. What I do on behalf of the city of Banderas is a public record. Now, it's privileged, often it's privileged, attorney-client privileged information, but this is a public record. Anybody here who wants a copy of this presentation is welcome to have it, right? But it's technically my work product, and I, and I created it outside this building, as does your city engineer and other people. Those are all public information. Likewise, it's problematic if you have, when you have employees that are going to be former employees and they take documents. Not that that's ever happened here, but perhaps it's been thought that it could have happened here. Those are public records. You can't take those, you can't destroy them, you can't do anything with those. But it's always been kinda this deal of, well, what do we do? Because people request those, and the city says, I don't know, we don't have that. Those aren't here, we don't know where they are, what do we do? And that lands on the city, it always has been the case. So what they've done is they've amended the Public Information Act to create this category of temporary custodians, right? And so you would all be temporary custodians, and any, any employees would be temporary custodians because if they're holding documentation, or have documents, you have those in your possession, that are requested through the city secretary, and she doesn't have copies of those, even though they're public records, right? You're considered a temporary custodian. So now there's all these rules that are gonna apply to that person. You're gonna have amount of time to get those records turned over to the city secretary, or those penalties fall on that temporary custodian as opposed to on the city secretary or the city itself. So it's just something to be mindful of because we're all bound by the Public Information Act when we serve the public. And we are, there's a Records Retention Act that the state has, that you've adopted locally as well, that we're all responsible for those things. Emails, text messages, anything such as that, if it's the public's business, it's public record. And now there's rules that are gonna govern what happens when those don't. And here's how it happens. Here's how it literally has happened in, in my professional career, is I get a request for information coming from the public, and they want documents. And they want it from every city, the city manager, and every council member, and the mayor, and all these people. And so we, all we can do through the city secretary is send out an email and a request to those individuals because we don't have access to personal emails, right, or personal email accounts, and say, please turn over these records, they've been requested. And sometimes we get records, sometimes we don't, and sometimes we get some records, and sometimes we have records from some that have CCs of other members that we don't get anything from. And up until this point, all we could do is send that off to the Attorney General as a representative sample and try to get affidavits from those who don't turn over records saying they don't have any. Now, here's what's problematic from anybody from the outside looking in is, is, and this is kinda going on at the national level right now, right? So if you're telling me you have no documents, and you sign an affidavit saying you have no documents, but this other person turned over documents that you're CC'd on, then either you destroy the public documents, which is a no-no, or what? I mean, we, you know, if that's what we don't know, but now the Public Information Act is going to define what that applies to, who that applies to, and what those rules are. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go through these, I kinda touched on them. You have a copy of this, right, if you wanna read through it? I'll keep it moving here. I think I touched on this.
Dan, we don't have a copy of that.
You don't have a copy of the-
I'm sure we can get it.
We can get it.
Okay.
Do you know where it is?
Yes.
We'll be sure to provide it to council before they leave. Thank you.
I don't need a hard copy.
I give them my copy, put in your packet, they'll get there.
So I'll pause on this one here. So what it says though is that a temporary custodian with possession, custody, or control of public information shall surrender or return the information to the governmental body not later than the 10th day after the date the officer for public information, the governmental body, or the officer's agent requests the temporary custodian to surrender or return the information. Now, this also changes our obligations under the Act on our Response to the Public. When they, when they seek that information, we do have a little, our time clock doesn't start running quite as fast if that information, if we're waiting on that to be returned to us from a temporary custodian. For purposes of deadlines related information or return to a governmental body by temporary custodian, the governmental body is considered to receive the request for that information on the date the information is surrendered or returned to the governmental body. So it gives an additional 10 days essentially, if that is being held by temporary custodian. What we would do, if we're the ones handling your request, is we would notify the requester, that information is held by temporary custodian, here's our time to get a response back to you, and let them know upfront that, hey, this might be a little longer than you're accustomed to because we're waiting on this information. Now also, another new change in the PIA has to do, this is a long overdue change, is on animal control and welfare enforcement. So, you, we no longer, it's considered confidential now. And I don't know who y'all use for your animal shelter, if you have one, if it's the county or how that's done. This would apply there as well, they're bound by the same act. But we no longer have to release the name and address information of somebody who adopts an animal. I have long been an advocate for this change because what happens inevitably is, is Fifi is out running around loose, gets picked up, doesn't have a chip. So she's brought in, and then she's adopted out, and then the person shows up and wants to know where the dog is, and it's already been adopted out instead of being euthanized. And they, what do they want? They want the information. You know, they want the information of the person who adopted it, and they're gonna show up on that person's doorstep, which is unfair for both parts. It's a bad situation, don't get me wrong, it's a bad situation, but we're putting an innocent person sometimes in a bad situation because the adopt, the person whose dog's been adopted out is very, very upset about that. So, it's now confidential. On third-party contracting information, this is just some slight changes to what happens when you guys get a request for information that involves proprietary or third-party information that they wanna keep confidential. What this means is that you're bidding information, right? So anytime you have a big project and you bid that out, and you get all these documents in, let's say you have five bidders, well, four of them are gonna be unhappy. And they're gonna want all the information submitted by the other bidders because they wanna see where they, where they beat them, where they undercut. Because public contracts, when those are awarded, those responsible bidder, right? So they wanna see what their line items are. And what often happens is, some of that information is considered proprietary, depending on what type of contract it is. And some of it just puts you in a bad situation. Every year, there are some things you bid every year. Materials, for example. You are always gonna need chemicals for treatment, facilities, and materials for road repair. And so, what this does is allows us to further protect, or better protect, third-party contracting information when it's requested under the Public Information Act, and gives that third party a right to also participate in that process to try to protect their information. We already pretty much, I, I can tell you, our practice has always been, and that I brought with me from where I came from, has been to, to, to include any third party. If they've marked something proprietary, we already notify them that they have a right, because they already had a right, it's, it's just, they tweaked it a little bit, to submit a brief to the Attorney General. Because I can't argue why they're such proprietary, they have to do that. All I can say is there's a third party that says this is proprietary, they'll have to tell you why. Because they didn't even tell me why. Okay, and that one goes into effect in January. Alright, next one. Public information and about parades, concerts, and other entertainment events. I don't think this is gonna impact you. I do have some cities that like to throw some big parties. And, you know, by that I mean, you know, celebrations, festivals, you know, whatever, citywide-type events that where they close down half the town to host these huge events. And so what this does is just basically says, if you enter in a contract and you're spending public funds to put on that show, and you're bringing in this national act or whatever, that's public information, the public gets to know how much of the public dollars went into that. For example, the town where I live recently, you've probably heard about it, had Garth Brooks was in our city, performed a huge concert at Green Hall a month or two ago, and they shut down most of Green, and it was huge, huge crowds. Well, the public would have a right to know if the, any city funds went into, how much that cost? That wasn't free, all those officers wandered around, did the event pay for that, or did the city have to pay for that? So this is just to try to make that information readily available. Attorney's fees. So, in a suit by governmental body to withhold information from a requester, the court may assess the cost of litigation or reasonable attorney's fees incurred by plaintiff or defendant who substantially prevails only if the court finds the action or the defense of the action was groundless in fact or law. I've been doing this a long time, and I've yet to have to sue the Attorney General on behalf of client, but our firm has, on two occasions, sued and won, beat the Attorney General in this type of a situation. So when that happens, this is just saying that you don't get your attorney's fees unless it was completely groundless in fact or law, on either side. Okay, moving on. Annexation, let me just summarize this for you. You can't do it anymore, basically, in a nutshell. So right after we learned how to do tier one and tier two annexations, and the differences, they've eliminated all that. I feel bad for the counties and the cities who went through the process to be designated a tier two. But that's all out the window. The thing to remember now, for a city your size, you can do voluntary annexation. Pretty much that's it. You can annex property you own, if it's contiguous to your current boundaries. And if anybody wants you to annex them, then you can do it. And that's pretty much it. There's really not any more going to be any involuntary annexation. Very few exceptions to that. Sometimes there's, there's, there might be some development agreements, probably not here that I'm aware of, but in, in some cities, we have development agreements that have hundreds and hundreds of acres tied up. And we believe those are still enforceable, voluntary or involuntary. So what, what that would mean is that if I have a Chapter 212 development agreement that says that if I ever seek to subdivide my property, it's considered a petition for voluntary annexation, the city can annex me, I entered that agreement in exchange for not being annexed. That's why people enter those agreements. So when a city starts, in the, in the good old days, when cities would start doing annexation, we had to offer an agreement to people if they owned over a certain-sized parcel that would allow them to continue in the ETJ not be annexed in exchange for some certain restrictions that they would agree to on what they could do with their property. And one of those is, hey, if I ever wanted to subdivide this property, you can consider that a petition for voluntary annexation. Those, none of, none of that's been tested yet in courts, we're looking forward to that opportunity. We think it's gonna happen. We have hundreds of those out there with a lot of cities, and we think they're still enforceable. Also, industrial district contracts, I have a few of those out there that I think are still enforceable because it's considered a voluntary annexation under the terms of the contract. So unless they're gonna invalidate those contracts, we'll still be able to use those, if they already existed. Cybersecurity, cybersecurity training is required, it's mandatory now. You have to, but it's, the burden falls first on the state. They have this Department of Information Resources, which should scare us all. And, and, and they're going to annually certify at least five cybersecurity training programs for state and local government employees, and update standards for maintenance of certification by the cybersecurity training programs. And those programs must, and it kinda goes through what's required. Long story short, this is applicable, and you're going to, at least once a year, a local government shall identify employees who have access to a local government computer system or database and require those employees and elected officials, more training that y'all get to do it, ACOG, they're already, they're already working on their program, just so you know. So watch for that because it's free for you. But you're gonna have to go to this training. Yes, sir?
Dan, basically, that's every city employee we have, except the guys out there at Public Works who are patching streets.
Okay, yep. Now, so here's, now here's why though. There's, there's good, it really, it is a good intention by the state, it really is a good intention. So many cities, if you, if you've been paying attention on the news about local government, have been victims of malware. And what happens is these people are basically holding your city funds hostage for a ransom. You know, and you can buy insurance for that, and you can do all these things. But as we all know, the key to everything's education, right, and preventing this on the front end. And so, so cities are gonna have to meet a certain level of cybersecurity, and they're gonna have to have their employees and elected officials trained on that program. Because it's, it's way too easy for people to access and, and hack into your system and, and get access to data. And those, that's your citizens' data, right? Y'all have information, a lot of your citizens, they, they have utility accounts with you, and they have a lot of information in your system. And so we have to do our best to protect that. Now it's mandatory, but the state is gonna develop the programs, and then they're gonna roll those out, and you're gonna be in good shape, ACOG's already on top of this.
Do we have a timeline, we've gotta do it by a certain date?
Now, this bill was, is already effective. It was effective immediately, and I don't, they didn't, there's no mention, there's a couple things. There's no mention of timelines, there's no mention of penalties, but it is required.
Because I've been bombarded by emails from companies that are going, okay, based on your blah, 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 it's a base of $150 plus $28 per employee, but I can just ignore those and wait for this?
Yeah, check with ACOG. Keep, keep an eye on the ACOG training schedule because yes, ACOG training isn't just for elected officials, it's for your employees as well. And that's the Alamo Area Council of Governments for anyone who doesn't know that active schedule. So, ballot language requires, and I, I don't, I don't believe y'all have had a bond election in the last four years that I've been working with you, but if you ever do, so this Senate bill would require that those have a specific purpose on the ballot. I don't think this is gonna be a big change for this clients we represent, but for some cities, it, it might be. And this, this is, the whole idea is about transparency, right? They need the voters to understand what they're voting on when they go in there and they look at a ballot, and it's gonna be a bond proposition, which are normally millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars, and it's your citizens authorizing you to tax them more to pay for the debt that you're about to issue. And so this is the state saying, don't lump them together, don't try to put everything in one proposition where voters, maybe there's one thing in there that they wanna do, they don't wanna be putting voters in a position where they're having to vote for a bunch of undesirable things because they need this one thing. So it's just saying, one question per proposition, and it has to clearly state what it is for. In plain language, which the state needs to pay attention to that on their constitutional amendment. I'm just saying, you know, I mean-
And unfundamental.
There's a, there's a lot could be said for plain language. Okay, boycott Israel, which apparently has been a problem in Texas, I guess, because we have this legislation and now they've had to amend it. It's a fun thing though, so I wanna talk about it. So, the last legislative session, they passed House Bill 89 in 2017 that, that required that you, and I've had so many cities ask me this, including Banderas, why do we have to put this in our contract? I don't know, the state says we have to put it in our contract. We had to put language in all the contracts that y'all enter into, depending on the value of the contract, that made the contractor promise, and pinky swear, that they would not boycott Israel during the term of the contract. that made the contractor promise and pinky swear that they would not boycott Israel during the term of the contract. And I thought it was nonsensical when it, and I have nothing against Israel, but I also don't plan to boycott them, so it wasn't a big deal. And then there was a lawsuit filed and the person won. It was over in Flugerville, Flugerville INC, uh an independent contractor, a a young woman sued and won. And so they had to amend the statute and clarify, so now they've said, well, okay, if you got ten or more full ti- full-time employees and the contract has a value of a hundred thousand dollars or more to be paid wholly or partly from public funds, then you gotta put that language in there. Still unconstitutional, it's gonna get challenged again and it's gonna go down again, but until it does, we have to abide by it. My firm has to put that on every every time we submit a response to proposal to be the city attorney somewhere. We also have to put boycott Israel language in there. Because we don't know how much the contract, or we have no idea how much the fees will be, so we have to put it in there. And we have more than ten employees, so. Okay, official websites. If you have an official website, of course, it has the disclaimer at the top, who it applies to or who it doesn't apply to. Um but you have to have a publicly accessible internet website that contains the following information, it kinda just has the the categories and I think it's been a while since I've looked through everything on your website, but I don't remember yours being very problematic, it's you have a generally good website, but we just need to make sure that uh even though, so you have a population of less than five thousand. And I think your county population, if it's less than twenty-five thousand, some of those sections don't apply to. Now, what I would say though, and just, e- even if the statute doesn't require it, if you already have a website and it doesn't cost you extra to meet these things, I would strive to meet this because it's best practices whether you are statutorily required to or not. Because all of these things are designed to be increased transparency with your citizens and they're paying for the website. Alright, elections, love elections. Uh candidate residency, so that's a hot topic. I don't know it's ever been a hot topic here, but in other places candidate residency often comes up. So this is a this is a legitimate issue. For purposes of satisfying the continuous residency eligibility requirement, a person who claims an intent to return to a residence after a temporary absence may establish that intent only if the person has made a reasonable substantive attempt to effectuate that intent and has a legal right and a practical ability to return to the residence. Now, if you're displaced because of a disaster, they have an exception for you. Personally, it to me, it clarifies zero, but they made this change, so I'm making you aware of it. Uh every election in every city, everywhere that I go to, there's always a question every time about residency. So I was being a little bit facetious, every election, someone, and the city secretary, just let me say it, for the record, out loud in a public setting, the city secretary is powerless, if she's the administrator of that election, to challenge anything such as that. They take what you put on that application and they are very limited in what they can do about it, even now with this change. Uh it all, it's all about intent, it's all about what that person says, they're the ones who have to defend that. The city secretary really can't challenge them on that very much. There are set out in statute though as to who can and when they can. Also, runoff ballots now are required that the order of the candidates' names on the ballot of any runoff election or election held to resolve a tie vote shall be in the relative order of names on the original election ballot. And I know what you're thinking, tie votes never happen, except when it happened here, two elections together, so they do happen. Now, that was a coin flip, right, did that come down to a coin flip?
No, they they we had a runoff election.
I wanted it to come down to a coin flip because that would have been very cool and very Texan, but okay, so they had runoff after all. I was hoping for the coin flip. Uh also, um now the early voting polling places, I don't know that this impacts, I think you have joint elections here with your county, this probably wouldn't be a deal with you. I actually have some clients where the county won't hold joint elections with the city. And this this other change here is gonna be problematic for those cities because this says you can't have a polling place other than where the county has a polling place, basically, if there's a statewide election and it's a November election, you have to have it in the same place. The reason why that can be problematic, if you're a small community and the county doesn't cooperate with you, often cities wanna have that polling place at where, City Hall, because that's where people come and do business or, you know, the library, someplace where, you know, they know their citizens are coming to, but you wouldn't be able to do that. Again, I don't I don't think it's an issue here. Uh this is just, I'm not gonna read through all this, just publication of voter information, just the bill that that talks about what's required. Uh it, there are certain things, voter registration and the list and the roles that have to be published, that's a requirement. Building materials, okay, so this was a big one, this one hit hard. Hit a lot of cities really, really hard. And um lot of gray in this still, but more so in the in the ancillary things that came out of this. So the bottom line on building materials is, a lot of communities, particularly in the San Antonio and Austin areas, well, any of the big metropolitan areas, they have appearance standards, right, so it's like, it's like if you lived in a citywide HOA, right, any any new construction in those large communities, uh they had building material requirements, they had facade requirements, they had minimum masonry requirements and all these types of uh of material requirements. So uh now, that is no longer possible, okay, it's very limited now. If 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 whatever you're, whatever the national codes allow for building materials, a community can't adopt anything that contradicts that. City can't contradict the national codes. Uh so if your code in any of the last three issues of that code allow a particular construction material, then the city has to allow that material. And you can't dictate um that certain percentages have to be, I have a lot of cities that have percentage masonry requirements. Seventy-five, eighty-five percent for residential, that's all out the window, you can't do that anymore. Uh now, there are some exceptions, right, there are some notable exceptions. Uh if you already have a historic district in place, literally in place, not just adopted, but actually applied, uh then you can, you still can enforce the restrictions uh that the Department of Interior standards. If you have a cultural district, if you have, you know, things such as that, or if you're, for example, if you uh if you're incentivizing development, like through your EDC or through a three-eighty grant from the city, you can require as part of receiving public assistance that people meet certain standards if you want them to, on grant-funded activities. And um so I have a lot of communities that are that are trying to really emphasize that, emphasize those Main Street grants and things such as that as a way, a means to to still get the the masonry requirements that they want. Now, there are some things, this just amplifies what it doesn't apply to. Uh one of the most confusing provisions of the building material bill, and I I have the actual text of the bill that we can provide to you, um had to do with the regulation of outdoor lighting. So this the section, this section does not apply uh to an ordinance regulating outdoor lighting adopted by, now here's the here's the here's the part where it's uh problematic for Banderas. A certified dark sky community over than five miles of an active military base or that is adopted under LGC two-twenty-nine or two-forty. So I'm not gonna get into LGC two-twenty-nine or two-forty, two-forty is for a county, two-twenty-nine is for a community, but they're inapplicable in in your circumstances. Um that has to do with if you're if you're if you're out near an observatory. Like if you're a community near like the McDonald Observatory or something like that. It also doesn't apply uh to a historic preservation ordinance adopted under two LGC two-eleven, which is your zoning authority. Uh if the city is a certified local government as determined by the Texas Historical Commission. So to be a certified local government though, you have to have the ability to to put that zoning on property even over uh the person's objection about three-quarters vote. That's how you can be a certified uh uh local government, that's one of the ways, you have to meet a bunch of criteria, you are not. A building of historical, cultural, architectural significance designated before April first, twenty nineteen, which is when this went into effect. A building in a historic district designated on the National Registry or as a Texas landmark. A building designated under the Main Street program. And if none of the above applies, you must have the voluntary consent of the owner. Now, but this is just building materials, right? And so I would I would emphasize that, so in your lighting ordinance, there are some building materials listed that are prohibited, that you can no longer prohibit, and we need to modify that. I think in the lighting ordinance, we we prohibited uh, what is it called, the sodium chloride or whatever, the big, the big.
We might have referenced certain types of bulbs.
Yeah, if it's so if those were prohibited, you couldn't prohibit those, but this doesn't nullify the directional, that's not controlling the building materials, requiring downward facing lighting and or prohibiting, you know, facing lighting up or things such as that. Uh dimming requirements and things such as that, to me, this isn't going to nullify that, this is nullifying materials. So to the extent that your local regulations regulate materials, this would say you couldn't do that. But it's just a matter of trying to go through there, because you're not a certified dark sky community. I mean, we know that, we know that you're not. But you do have a, you do have basically an ordinance, a lighting ordinance, based on what some certified dark skies communities have done. And you're not within five miles of a military base. But I don't think all is lost, I think it's a matter of materials, yeah, you can't do that, but I think you can still deal with directional and deal with uh dimming. So that's not a regulation material. Any, well, did y'all have any more questions on building materials?
Code enforcement would have questions on that, but they're not here.
Well, and we have, I did have a, I know Jay and I had a telephone conversation, I don't know if, I don't know who all was in on that conversation about, you know, making sure that we had a grasp on, I mean, because initially, there was a belief that, okay, you can't do anything like that. And that was the first conversation we had, we had a a second conversation that, you know, it's really getting into the material though, it's not getting into the actually what you can regulate or not regulate, other than materials. Okay, so city maps, um you're not a home rule city, so this will not affect you very much, I don't believe. If you have an official city map, though, one of the things I would encourage you to do is is have links to that uh digitally on your website, if you if you do have an official map, it's important. As is your zoning map, understand that a lot of cities get lax on their zoning. When you when you have a zoning change, you need to immediately update your your zoning map, because that's the official, that's what's official. That's the official zoning of the city. And so uh I know at one point y'all were working on GIS, Jay, is that still, y'all still moving towards anything on that? That'd be very beneficial because it has layers then and you can see what the zoning is, where the flood plain is, all those kind of things. But it it isn't free. Uh this one's not, this is another one that's not real, this isn't a big deal. This was, they really tried to make it illegal for y'all to to pay dues to TML, it was kinda kinda funny. They flew a plane over the Capitol towing a banner about cities paying for lobbying. Uh but TML member fees are not spent to influence legislation, so the dues that y'all pay on behalf of the city to TML are not used for any kind of lobbying, so it wouldn't have prevented that and need not be included separately in your budget. Because they don't like, legislators don't like Scott Houston and Bill Longley showing up at hearings and talking in favor of cities and and talking against some of the things that are trying to be done. It's apparent, it, you know, what's funny is that it's, I guess, no member of the legislature actually lives in a city, that's what I've decided, that's what I've concluded finally. Uh this one here, the development approval process was a really, really big change and many cities are continuing to struggle with this. If you aren't, uh it's probably because the development here is such that it's not a factor. But there's now a shot clock on the development approval process. So what that means is if somebody walks in and they're wanting to uh plat a piece of property, a clock starts running. And there's only so much time that the city has before they have to have that in front of the P and Z and the city council, because I think you have a two-step process, I think your P and Z looks at the plats, but I think final approval rests with the governing body here. Uh so anyway, this is a big change to chapter two twelve and it would include the way it's worded, it says plan or plat. So uh there's a lot of disagreement as to whether or not that includes site plans and master plans and things such as that. I have some communities who have said, we're gonna treat them all the same, I have others that are gonna argue with the developer that that is a site plan that does not have a shot clock. Uh and why that's all important, if uh in in this is kinda getting in the weeds a little bit, why that's important, that's chapter two forty-five of the Local Government Code is divesting statute. And so if I come in, when I file that initial document, that's gonna be the first in a series of documents, I'm vested at the develop, at that point in time in all of your ordinances and all of your requirements. And so it's important for me to get that filed, right, but what this does is also say you only have so much time to approve it or it's gonna be deemed approved. So, the bill requires municipal authority responsible for approving plats to take the following action with regard to the initial approval of a plan or plat within thirty days after the date the plan or plat is filed, approved, approved with condition, or disapproved. Those are the only three things you can do. And so what we've done and certainly can talk to Jay about if you need this here, is we've developed a process uh for for many of our cities in the San Antonio area, where it's not considered a a a final application until you get everything on this one, on a checklist that we'll have, all these sign-offs by these other entities. So for example, before I bring that plat to the city and Jay even accepts it, it's gonna have to have a check from the utilities, it's gonna have a have to have a check from uh anybody who's gonna have something that's gonna be on that plat, a flood plain, all that stuff has to be already reviewed and considered good before he has to accept that. Um there's a way to do that, that puts this, rolls this timeframe back on the developer as opposed to being on the city. Uh where this is gonna really affect cities on is on cities like you that don't have a s- a development staff, you know, uh on hand to do those types of reviews.
Dan, I don't know where it is, but I feel like somewhere in our our policy or in bylaws somewhere, we have a a greater timeline allowed that we would need to update to be congruent with this new law.
If you do, then yes, you would.
Are you familiar, do you know what I'm talking about?
No.
So give like P review, like more, like forty-five days or sixty days or something, just we need to double check that.
Right, so I've I've got flow charts and things that can assist your staff on on, you know, kinda putting that together. The one that we've we've developed has been adopted in multiple jurisdictions in this area. Uh but, you know, our initial, my initial conversation with staff here was that we, they don't get so many of these that they can't meet the timelines. And so if that's the case, that's great for people developing here and it's great for the city as long as we can meet those timelines. Okay, revenue caps, this is a big one too. So, we have, we renamed the rollback tax rate the voter approval tax rate, because that makes it sound better. Uh and provided for a voter approval rate of three-point-five percent. So for a taxing unit, other than a special taxing unit, it authorized the taxing unit to carry forward any unused increments. Uh so if you don't go all the way up to what you're allowed to, you can roll that forward and take a bigger chunk at a future time. Uh now, you are less than thirty-seven thousand, so you can calculate a de minimis rate, which is a rate that when applied to a taxing unit's current total value will impose an amount of taxes equal to five-hundred thousand dollars. Plus the taxing unit's no new revenue maintenance and operations rate and the taxing unit's current debt rate. Now, this is, this is very confusing. The whole idea in all this is to cap how much you can raise your tax, how much taxes, how much you can raise your rate. Because that's easier than fixing the school funding problem, so they can just say, we're gonna restrict your ability to raise new revenue instead of actually fixing the problem. They wanted it to be two percent, and so, you know, three-point-five is not as bad as it was gonna be. And the part about the smaller communities was added during the debate process to make it more palatable to smaller communities, so.
But Dan, it doesn't apply to the maintenance separation rate or the interest and sinking rate on the debt service, right?
No, it just doesn't apply to debt service, it doesn't, uh it does, it, this is specifically for your M and O. Yeah, that that's the, it it can't limit how much on the debt rate, right, it it, this is, this cap is your M and O.
It's a basic, okay.
That's the general fund revenue that's not. The debt revenue is earmarked, right, that's in a special, that's in a restricted fund. Your debt rate services that debt, and so people have never been able to roll back the debt rate. They've never had the ability to do that. So I I think what you're gonna see, what's gonna come out of this is cities, a lot of cities like to say that they don't raise, they didn't raise taxes, but they don't have any debt, and what they really do is they carry the debt on the M and O, they carry it in the general fund instead of actually declaring it as debt. I think you're gonna see a lot more cities being truthful on that truth in taxation form as to how much is debt and debt service and how much is maintenance and operations, because they're gonna have to, to make sure they protect, they protect that tax rate.
Well, this is the first year that we've, well, since nineteen ninety-six, that we've actually imposed the interest and sinking on the debt. And we were very specific in all of our publications to break out, this is for the M and O and this is for the INS and this is for your property tax. So there was some. So there was some confusion about we were suddenly raising taxes by six point eight eight percent, but that was for the interest and sinking, and that's a variable number. That number changes.
Yeah, depending on the debt you're servicing on the INS. But every year, the city and, and, well, the, whoever does, whoever calculates your rate, works off of your, your treasurer, whoever does a, a truth in taxation form from which they work. And that's where you list, it doesn't ask you how much, it says, what is you, you know, what is your debt, you know, you have to list, this is our debt, this is what we have to carry interest and sinking for, because they use that to calculate that rate. And that rate can't be rolled back at all. Just the other one can, so, and that's critical.
So three and a half percent on top of the effective rate?
It's, so the three and a half, uh, yes, that, so that's called the, that's the no new revenue maintenance and operations rate.
Okay, okay.
So that would be, yes, and I think maybe that's what you're referring to. So yes, the three and a half, you can't go above that more than three and a half.
On your effective rate.
And for you, though, it would be this de minimis rate that you could calculate. I don't think y'all would get close to that. So I don't think this is gonna have a huge impact on Banderas. But there are communities that are really gonna be strapped by this.
Thank you.
Yeah, that doesn't affect y'all either. Telecommunications and cable right-of-way rental fees, all I'm gonna say on this is you can only get one now. Used to be you could collect a, you get a franchise fee for both telecom and, and cable. And, and they've lobbied successfully, so they have statewide franchises, and they've been paying communities two. They're now paying you one, that was a hit to your general fund that you may or may not have been aware of.
You did mention that. Didn't you Suzanne?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure y'all got hit by, everybody got hit by it, so. They dropped the lowest one statewide. So just some miscellaneous ones here. Brew pub reporting, subjects brew pubs to the sales tax reporting standards applicable to, to everyone else. Cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and tobacco products that cha, age changed to twenty-one from eighteen. Dogs at restaurants. A food service establishment may permit a customer to be accompanied by a dog in an outdoor area if it has the requirements that, that would be, have to be met. A city may not adopt or enforce an ordinance rule or similar measure that imposes a requirement on a food service establishment for a dog in an outdoor dining area that is more stringent than those requirements. So just know that. I don't know if that's a thing here or not, but if it is, these are the standards that you need to be aware of. And that's one that might require a local ordinance to put it in place. Also, uh, because of people like Will, we have this sale of lemonade permission. He's non, so he's out here to defend himself. You can't keep people from selling the lemonade, lemonade stand to young, young children and stuff, but... And rock climbing is now part of the recreational use statute, so for port liability purposes. Don't know if that's a thing here. All right, so, any questions? That was not all three hundred and thirty, thank God.
Thank you so much.
But, uh, you know, the city has this. If anybody wants a copy of it, you're welcome to have a copy of it. And she'll email it out to the council.
Very informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anything, council?
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you, Dan. And give us live the, print out of the, of the PowerPoint and get it to everyone who's in your box, we'll email it out to you.
Email, it's great.
Okay, item five, executive session. The city council will convene in closed session to seek the advice of legal counsel on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state may affect a civil conflict with the act to which options available and process for transitioning economic development programs. Dan, I would like you to make a brief presentation to all of us here, give us an idea of what this is about, and then if council still desires, we'll adjourn if we get in a session.
Suzanne, I just wanna point out that the EDC slash MDD government code update is in item E.
Unfortunately, they didn't let you set it up today.
No, no, it says that...
It was just me putting it on yours, so you could access to it on your iPads. It wasn't, it's not in the agenda that way. It's just, it's just for y'all.
Thank you, it's just a link, got it.
Yeah.
So Dan, if you could touch briefly on the municipal development district?
Yeah, I can, I can go through, I can go through most of, there's a few things for sure, certain, that the council might wanna discuss or have questions. This, this is one of those things that, um, the questions I might wanna answer in closed session from the, from the commission, from the council. But I'm happy to go through this, this is just an informational presentation, because most people aren't familiar with, with the differences. So, um, just, just briefly to kinda introduce this. One of the things that our firm has done successfully, we were the first, uh, we led the first two transitions in the state to convert a type A, and I know y'all are type B, but a type A economic development corporation to a municipal development district. And, and I'm gonna go through why that's somewhat complicated. But I'll also tell you, in making this presentation, this is, I don't, I don't represent your EDC. And they might be doing a fantastic job. This is nothing against your EDC. This is me fulfilling my duties and obligations to the council to make you aware of all the options that are available. We're doing this with all of our communities that have EDCs, because there really are no new EDCs being formed. Every city that has options now are going with a municipal development district. And so this presentation is really just to educate the council and the public or whomever on why that is, what the options are, what the differences are. And it may or may not be a fit here. I've had many communities say, eh, it's not really a fit for us. But if it's a fit here, I just want you to be aware of the option. So I'll go through this, and if y'all, any questions you have that, that are specific to your situation here, we might entertain those in closed session, if that's okay for council.
Do y'all understand what Dan is saying? Keep your specific questions till we get into to our, that relate to our particular situation?
Yeah, so, I've got a few charts here, and, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead, Jen. I can turn it a little bit. Again, this type of presentation is...
We didn't get the whole piece of that. We don't have that.
Sorry. You will, and these can be made available. I'm making this presentation in public meetings, so they're available if anybody wants a copy.
I wanna make copies right now. I've got it right here.
Yeah, I'd like to get them to follow along.
It hasn't changed since you gave this to me?
Um, yes, I did make changes.
Oh, well, forget it then.
Well, not major changes, it's fine. For follow along purposes, it's fine.
Follow along, right.
But, but, but just so y'all know, what, what Rebecca just handed her has information from another entity and not you specifically, so.
Is that okay, then, to share that?
Yeah, it's okay. Yeah, it's okay. I won't tell them, if you want to tell them.
But what you should, your package folks, is a comparison of ABs and MDDs that Rebecca found.
Those might be in here.
Yeah, some of those, that's, that's basically similar information.
I did get a chance to review that.
Okay, so, as y'all know, so, so, a type A or type B, they're called an EDC, an economic development corporation. That's important, right? So they are literally a corporation. They're formed under the Texas Business Organizations Code. They're a nonprofit entity. They are a corporate body. Any three people can form a corporation that wants to, right? It doesn't require any particular action to form a corporation, but it does require an election to actually have a tax that is going to, to give money to that corporation. So, an MDD is not that at all. So an MDD is literally a, a, a political subdivision of the state and the city that creates it. So it is a unit of government. It is a district. When you think about all the other special districts that y'all deal with, this is that type of entity. It's governed by chapter three seventy-seven of the Local Government Code, not five oh one through five oh five like you're accustomed to. There are no articles of corporation, because it's not a corporation. There are no bylaws, because it's not a corporation.
That's all in here. Because it's a public, you can look at it.
So what they normally adopt, they don't adopt bylaws, they adopt rules of operation, because they're a unit of government. Political subdivision, the boundaries of an MDD, yes, sir.
Just to clarify, the information center is marked confidential, this is what you're going over, we can't...
You know, it is not what I'm, I did not provide that to you, but it is the same kind of information.
We certainly get it out, use it.
Yeah, though, I, I looked at what was in there, and all of it is public documents. So there's nothing, there's nothing confidential there.
It's just articles that I found online. There's a TML, Q and A.
My good friend Bill Longley wrote most of those things, and, and we collaborate quite a bit on this type of stuff. We both speak on this issue.
I Googled it, I don't know.
So one of the important, and probably the most important difference between an EDC and an MDD is, an MDD is very flexible on what the boundaries can be. An MDD can be any portion of the commu, any portion of the city or the entire city. It can be the city and part of the ETJ. It can be the whole city and the whole ETJ. And one of the most attractive things for communities who have an active and robust ETJ is an MDD. Because right now, it, if you do have any commercial enterprise in your ETJ, you don't get sales tax off that, right? But an MDD could. An MDD could collect a sales tax in the ETJ if it were created. And that money goes into the same pot for, as, as the money collected in the city to do economic development. And so one of the primary motivators for cities to transition is to put more money in their economic development pot that they can do projects with. The taxes, it can be in increments of an eighth, a fourth, three eighths, or a half of one percent. So like, for example, right now, what are y'all collecting on your sales tax? So you have a half a penny going to your EDC. So it could be the same thing. You could do a half a penny to the MDD. Now, be the same half a penny, we'll talk about that later, but that's what you would collect, but you would collect it throughout the district, instead of just in the, in the city of Banderas, if you went for the ETJ. So what are the different terms on the boards? So a type A has at least five members appointed by the city council. A type B has exactly seven members, that's what's required, appointed by the council, and three members must not be employees, officers, or city council members. So of the seven, by statute, four of the members on a type B can be city employees or officers of the city, but three can't be. Now, for an MDD, there are no restrictions whatsoever, other than you have to have at least four. So the minimum is four. They can all be members, so they can be members of the council, the, they can include city employees. They can include, include county representatives if you wanted to. There are many cities who, when they're putting together theirs, if they're gonna include ETJ, they feel like, well, you know what, if we're gonna include ETJ, we want to have the county, the commissioners tell us, maybe, let, let them nominate somebody for one position, or something like that, just, it's whatever they, you decide.
Can I ask a question? Oh, sorry, never mind, forgot.
Uh, they serve staggered two-year terms on an MDD. There are no term limits by statute. It's whatever you decide. They are the rules of operation. That's one of the benefits. You must reside within the boundaries of the district. So if the district is the city and the ETJ, you have to live either within the city or the ETJ. Okay, you have to stay within the boundaries. So, uh, for a type A and B, all expenditures and programs, as y'all know, have to be authorized and approved by the city council. With an MDD, the MDD must establish a development project fund by resolution. And, and that is going to be where the funds go that dictate what can be spent. You would approve the, well, hypothetically, you would approve the budget, though, just as you do for the EDC. You would approve that development project fund, and anything else you wanted to approve, depending on how you establish the rules of operation. So it's, it's really, uh, don't think of it as being, well, they're, they're a, that, that MDD would be a separate political thing. We would have no control of, that's not true. It's however you establish it in the very beginning, when you, when you establish the rules of operation, that you want those directors that you appoint, and you require them to adopt. Conflict of interest, so, chapter one seventy-one that applies to the city council does not apply to your EDC. And I, and I know we've had this conversation. Their conflict of interest provisions, unless they dictated them in their bylaws to be more strict, are governed by the, the Nonprofit Corporation Act, okay? That's what determines conflicts of interest. However, with an MDD, since it is a political subdivision, it does have to play by the same rules. Members of the MDD have to follow one seventy-one, just like the city council. That is the conflict of interest provisions they would have to follow. Uh, nothing different on compensation. They're just reimbursed their, their, their officers. The quorum, it's not specified in three seventy-seven, so it's half plus one under the open meetings act, right? So half the members plus one constitution quorum.
Dan, could you just hit on how we create the district and...
Yeah, I'll get that.
Let's, I think we need to go through every aspect of this.
Every difference? Well, uh, this one's an important one, though, because right now, your type A, your type B has to have public hearings. They have to wait a certain amount of time to fund projects. They have to publish things. An MDD has none of those requirements, none whatsoever. They don't have to have public hearings, they don't have to have publications, they don't have to have performance agreements. That doesn't mean they shouldn't. It just means it's whatever you decide. You write the rules.
Rules of operation.
You write the rules. So how it's created, uh, and, and I won't go through all these, I'll, I'll try to hurry up. But, uh, but, but the project, this, this is important too. The, the projects that are defined for the MDD in their statute are the identical projects that a type B EDC already is authorized to do, right? So anything you can currently do, an MDD could do as well. That's the, that's the short version. With the addition of the convention center facility or related improvements, such as, and it has a paragraph that I've got there, that's specific to an MDD. I've already touched on that. Again, I'll make this available. Oh, okay, so here's the critical part. You cannot combine ballot issues. And, and this is the, this is what makes it very, uh, not really controversial, but it does make it difficult, and this is why it hadn't been done before we did it, is, is people had not successfully done it, because they, if you change from an A to a B, right, it's one proposition. Like, you can put it on the ballot as one proposition. You can't do that with an MDD, because it's a, it's a governmental, it's a unit of government. So you can't deal with it in the same proposition as the corporation. Does that make sense to everyone? Plus, the boundaries are different, right? Different voters. So you can't combine it. That means it's a two-election process if you wanna transition to an MDD. And that's what throws folks off just a little bit, but it's not really that complicated. You create the MDD, and everybody who's within the boundaries gets to vote. So if you wanted to include your ETJ, that election would include every, everybody that's a citizen voter of Banderas, as well as the ETJ, would get to vote. And they would create that district. The ballot, that's the actual statutory ballot proposition, that, that's exactly what it would look like. The creation of, it would say, maybe say the creation of the Banderas Municipal Development District, and half of one percent would be what you would put in the other one if you wanted it to be the same as it is now. Now, here's the difference, right? So that's not gonna put that tax in place. You're not gonna immediately start collecting that in the ETJ. All that, all the citizens can do is authorize that to happen. They create the district and they authorize the tax. But that tax will ju, that district will literally just exist, and nothing will happen until the second election, if it's successful. I'll tell you about that in just a second. Uh, I'll, I'll skip ahead, um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna skip ahead. I'll tell you where you can see.
Dan, is, is there a timeline from creating the district and the election, and the, and the second election? Is there a timeframe?
November.
Okay, so you can tap down, okay.
Yeah, and you could, as a city, you can only have elections twice, right? You can either have them in May, you can have them in November, because it has to be on a, on a regular election day. So, um, these are the general powers of a, of an MDD. Pretty much the same as what you're accustomed to, but, but as a district, it's, it's slightly different. What, what I tend to recommend, and what I've done, and others that we've transitioned, is have an interlocal agreement between the district and the city to provide the services needed by the district. It's less complicated that way. The other thing that's different between a district and your current EDC is those funds are gonna come from the state straight to the district, to their fund. They're not gonna pass through the city to, to, to that corp, to a corporation. They'll go straight to the taxing entity. This is just the development project fund, trying to skip ahead here. Okay, so here's what they can't do, right? So... if approved at the election, they can impose a sales and use tax. But they can't if there's not room. And that's the problem. That's why I said it takes two elections, right? You don't wanna put, now theoretically, you could put things on the same ballot. You could put on there the creation of the district and the repeal of your half cent sales and use tax for the corporation. And eliminate your corporation. You can put that on one ballot. I don't recommend that at all. Because you could come away very empty-handed. You didn't get the district. And people didn't understand what you were trying to do. They thought it was gonna give them money back and it doesn't. It just reduces the sales tax. Uh, so I don't put them on the same ballot. Uh, but once it's created, they sit there and they wait. They can't impose it until there's room, even though there's room in ETJ because the tax has to be the same throughout the district. You can't go ahead and start collecting in the ETJ. Okay, let me skip ahead. Okay, this is important. So the adoption of the tax, the change of the tax rate or the repeal of the tax takes effect on the first day of the first calendar quarter occurring after the expiration of the first complete quarter occurring after the day, you got, you got this, right? After the day in which, if you're taking notes, make sure you get this, on which the comptroller receives a notice of the results of the election adopting, changing, or repealing the tax. All you need to know is we will time it, if y'all undertake this eventually, we will time it where that is seamless, where one starts collecting when the other one stops collecting. It's possible to do. So, this is the slide the mayor was referring to. So how do you terminate an EDC? Uh, it's confusing because as y'all know, you could get rid of the, a corporation if you want to, you can terminate a corporation. That doesn't stop the tax from being collected. So, those taxes have to be authorized by your voters to be collected in the first place. And what the statute says is to reduce or increase the tax requires an election as well. So there's no, there's little benefit to doing anything to your corporation until you know you have your district in place. And until and unless the voters authorize you to do that. So if you, if in May, you formed a district, right? Uh, it would sit there and then in November, if you had it on the ballot to, you would have on the ballot to reduce the sales tax allocation for the four B corporation by a half, you know, completely, like zero it out. You're gonna zero it out. And then you would terminate your corporation. The reason why you would do that is because the district then meets like the next day after that election and they pass an order, a resolution, levying the tax. And then all of that gets sent off at the same time. Does that make sense? Now, um, the corporation has to continue until it, it's a wind-up, right? I mean, everybody's had a corporation know that you have to make sure all the obligations are either paid off or transitioned. The last one I did, uh, was very smooth because, uh, everybody was on board. The EDC wanted to transition because they were, A, they wanted more flexibility. Uh, they passed resolutions of support before the elections. They lobbied, you know, they were out there and say, hey, yeah, do this, good for us. And they became the, the board of the MDD, you know, they just kinda moved over, put on a different hat. Uh, and they assigned, reassigned all the, the, uh, agreements. You know, they had outstanding contracts. They were all just assigned to the MDD and business carried on. They didn't even change the name that they operated under, other than it was no longer a corporation. So, it can happen. The corporation will technically continue to exist for three years under the Business Organizations Code, even though it won't be active, uh, because that's required by statute. I think that's the basics of it. I kinda ran through that fast. This just talks about spring election and, and then a fall election. The, the, the transition of obligations. The key is in the rules of operation on any of these things. And, and quite honestly, it's, it's something that really has to fit the community. Community has to support the EDC people, you know, whoever's involved with economic development on a larger scale ha- needs to support it, needs to be in favor of it. And at the end of the day, um, you end up with more money in your pot to do economic development with and less restrictions that are statutory. The rules of operation are whatever you say they are as the governing entity. And I think that's the greatest benefit, is that flexibility and that, uh, that additional funds, if it makes sense. I don't know your ETJ, so I don't know how much money you're talking about. But I would certainly think that would be beneficial, uh, for most communities to look into and see what that is. Cause you need to know that boundary too. ETJs are not, it's not a nice, pretty circle. It, it's gonna jig, jag in and out all around your community, uh, so.
Thank you. And I think we're beginning to get kinda glazed over here because there's so much information about the, the different, the A and the B. So council, I think that, uh, one thing we should do in the near future is a workshop. I'd like to do it over mic when Dan could be available, have EDC's input. Uh, apparently, Art has looked into this and has, is aware of these and I'm really glad. I mean, I didn't know anything about this, though. But, uh, so with council's approval or consent, we'll adjourn into executive session to speak with Dan in closed session. So at seven oh six, I'm gonna adjourn the regular meeting. Take a five-minute break.